Welcome, everybody. We're going to call this meeting to order at nine o'clock. And it is Thursday, June twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty four. We're here for a discussion of the Bear Creek Flats Minor Subdivision Public Hearing. And at this time, I think I would request that we entertain a motion that we go into a public hearing.
Motion to go into a public hearing?
Second.
Okay, let's do a roll call.
Commissioner Dos?
Yes.
Commissioner Cassidy?
Here.
Commissioner Zimmerman?
Here.
All right, so we're open to public hearing. Let me explain the county procedures for that. We have a signature sheet going around, or where is that? Is there here? Okay, thank you. You can't testify today unless you fill that out and mark that yes, you want to testify, so that we have a record of who's testifying, please. Nobody should speak before the hearing until you've been recognized by myself. So if you do want to testify, sign that sheet and we'll call on you as we go around the room. All public hearing procedures should be recorded. Today, we're recording video and audio. Please speak clearly and loudly, especially if you're at the back of the room and you want to say something. Oh, I just saw you. So speak clearly and loudly if you're at the back of the room so that we can hear you. Please don't interrupt the speaker. If you have evidence and if you want to speak and you have evidence, we needed you to have four copies of that. People attending the public hearing, please engage in a respectful manner. And otherwise, we'd have to ask you to go to some other meeting. Once the chairman declares the hearing closed, no further evidence or testimony will be presented or considered. Those are the general rules of county public hearings. And then as per the agenda, let's see, I'm going to ask for the staff report. So Mr. Martenson, Ms. Brown, would you like to? We still got a chair over here if somebody wants to sit. Thank you. Okay. And there is another chair here if somebody wants to sit at the table. Okay. All right. Mr. Martenson?
Chairman, I'll certainly make a note here that I recuse myself as a planning administrator at this time, as I'm the applicant representative for Landworks Consulting.
Okay, so Ms. Brown?
Hi, Trish Brown, Planning Technician for Shushun County Planning and Zoning for the Record. I am bringing before you today an application by Jason and Sherrod Thompson, Bear Creek Flats, Nine Lot Minor Subdivision, case MS dash one six four dash two four. You should have the four-year package at the file, in particular, the staff report with the findings of fact, applicable legal standards, draft conclusions of law, draft conditions of approval, and recommended decision. We'll begin with the course proceedings, which outlines the taking and processing of this application and moving forward to get through to public hearing. The process started in January two thousand and twenty four, taking and processing the application. And as part of that process, it went through the agency reviews and based on the completed application and agency response information, the thirty-day comment period was completed, which was established on April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty four, and ended on May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty four. On April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty four, the site was posted with physical notices along the parcel boundaries, and notices were sent via U.S. mail to the adjacent property owners within thirty hundred feet of the subject property as required. The public hearing, of course, was scheduled for today. We did receive seven public comments, which were received, but I will review further in the court. As for finding this fact, the applicant is Landwork Consulting out of Silverton, and the property owner, excuse me, property owners are Jason and Sherrod Thompson out of Hayden. The applicant is requesting a minor subdivision for the creation of nine lots in the natural resource zone. The site is located not quite three miles up Bear Creek Road off Corral River Road. The legal description is outlined there. The zoning and surrounding zoning is natural resource. The surrounding uses is primarily rural residential and timber-related activities. The lot size, the parent parcel is not quite thirty-seven acres. The proposed subdivision will be comprised of nine lots. Eight of those lots will be between three and five, three and three and a half acres, and one lot will be approximately nine and a half acres. There is a bit of a discrepancy of the assessed acres of the parent parcel and the actual surveyed acres per the legal descriptions. The legal governing documents indeed will be used to document the actual acres on the final plot. The Shushun County Subdivision Code requires that the minimum lot size for a minor subdivision is two acres. The minor sub, the, excuse me, the minimum lot size in the natural resource zone is seventy-seven hundred square feet, which is a city lot. All these proposed lots are designed to meet and exceed these requirements. There are no structures on this site, and the current, the current use is rural recreation and timber production. The terrain characteristics of this site are typical rural forest and is pretty flat in this area. It is located at the foot of an adjacent mountainside and contains timber with native grasses and bushes. Bear Creek flows from east to west there all throughout the property. The comprehensive plan map does make this area central corridor. However, the subject site is on the north side of the mountain range there in the Bear Creek Valley, located due north of Smelterell Kellogg area and is very rural in nature and closely shares characteristics of the North Shushun District. This area is not located within an area of city impact. All lots are designed to utilize an individual water for domestic water service. There are currently no developed well sites, however, preliminary review of the area well logs at hydrologic sites of the site demonstrate that there are, there are opportunities for development of well sites. These lots are designed as recreational use with the potential for future residential use due to the proximity of Bear Creek within each lot. Specific and approval solutions for each lot are going to be required. This application is not seeking to have sanitary restrictions lifted on each of the proposed lots. Each lot owner will be required to seek approval of panhandle for septic. However, its panhandle has cost, and it's possible that these parcels will not have any approval location for septic approval. Access to existing and proposed lots is currently provided by access off Bear Creek Road. A public roadway maintained and serviced by Shushun County Public Works. At the western edge of the proposed property, the maintenance and service authority for the roadway converts to Forest Service Road four eight two. Existing and proposed future access to each parcel will be provided by individual common driveway. We reached out to Public Works for comment, and they indicated that they maintain approximately two point four three miles of Bear Creek Road, which was paved, repaved in two thousand and twenty one and is still, is in good shape. Public Works does not plan to maintain or take on any additional miles and currently maintained as they just do not have the resources. Any lots homes beyond the point of this road will not be the county's responsibility to maintain or down in the future. Public Works provided additional comments outlining the assessment of Bear Creek Road and potential impacts of the proposed subdivision. The pavement project in two thousand and twenty one fully utilized the county's right-of-way. There are no options currently exist for the widening the roadway for additional pullouts along the road due to the lack of right-of-way. Additionally, a traffic study will not be required due to the twenty mile an hour speed limit and low traffic volume there on Bear Creek Road. Upon assessment and conferring with their engineer, Public Works believes that the Bear Creek Road is suitable to handle any impacts that the proposed subdivision may bring without improvements or upgrades. We also reached out to the Forest Service, and this proposed subdivision will affect the road easement interest of Bear Creek Road, Forest Service Road four eight two, and is managed per the motor vehicle use map restrictions. Planning and zoning and Landworks Consulting work with Forest Service to allow four approaches onto Bear Creek Road four eight two to access nine lots of this proposed subdivision through our approach consent. We reached out to Fire District Two, who provides the emergency services in this area, who indicated that they had no objection to this proposal. All fire access roads, driveways are retired to comply with International Fire Code driveway and fire access requirements. These lots are outside of the institutional control program of the McFerrill Superfund site, so there are no requirements on, for them. We reached out to Fishing Game. All development or uses on these lots and tracts will be subject to fishing game requirements. We solicited comment to them, but we have not received anything yet from them. But this, this project will be subject to any of their requirements. We also reached out to Idaho Department of Water Resources. All the development or uses on these lots and tracts will be subject to IDWR requirements, and they have indicated that future development of the proposed lots may require a steam stream alteration permit if alteration occurs below the ordinary high watermark of Bear Creek. There is no site disturbance or development proposed. Future development will meet all state, excuse me, Site Disturbance Code and requirements and regulations. The proposed subdivision will conform to the desired standards of the surrounding area, including those outlined in ten dash three dash one of the Shushun County Code. This property is not in the FEMA floodplain, so there's no specific notations or provisions required on the plat. And as I mentioned at the beginning, their planning department did receive seven public comments against this project. Some of the public comments included traffic impacts, environmental, and more development in this area. The applicable, applicable legal standards are outlined there, including the Idaho Codes and Comp contingency Plan of Floodway or Floodplain Overlay Regulations. The staff analysis analyzes that we have met all the requirements for the application and the procedure has been met. The recommendation, conditions of approval are the normal standard fair. Just that you're going to meet the rules and or rules, regulations, ordinances for state, county, federal. Any further development will come before Planning and Zoning Commission and/or Forest County Commissioners. The applicants are going to meet Fire District, Forest Service, Panhandle Health, District requirements, and there's going to be the note on the plat for Panhandle. The terms and conditions placed on this approval will run with the land remaining valid upon joint ownership till approval expires. The applicant will meet the requirements, the final plat subdivision application requirements as specified in Shushun County Code titled ten dash five dash four, and this approval shall expire twenty-four months from the date of signing the order of decision. The draft conclusions of law are established conclusions from our code and have been marked in the affirmative. If you agree, we will go with these, but if you disagree, we will just need to know why and noted accordingly. You may review the list, which demonstrates that we have met those conditions, and the recommended motion has been added to improve within proposed conditions. And that is all I have is the staff report and the applicant. I'm going to see if you have questions or.
And does the applicant wish to speak?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Dan Martenson, for the record, Landworks Consulting. Thank you very much for this opportunity to present this case. Of course, thank you, Trish, for the well-thought-out staff report and pretty much sums up the proposal and the process we've met through. I did want to make a couple additional comments from, from an applicant standpoint. We purposely designed this subdivision to be in excess of the density for the area, which is why the three-acre lots and the nine-acre lot in the middle was designed that way. It also limits the future developability for, for subdivisions because of the road and the size of the lots. And so that was, that was on purpose. In particular, I went through the comprehensive plan designation and as discussed, it really fits more into the North Shushun District category versus the Central Corridor. Central Corridor really concentrates on the, the larger city development, urban industrial, the development here in the valley versus over there in Bear Creek. So recognizing that, I completed the design or the analysis based on the North Shushun District. And in there, there are specific development goals, one through seven, and I've listed those in my narrative. Goals one and two are specific to development of tailing ponds and vegetation screenings and floodplain design criteria for tailing ponds. Goals three and four are related to industrial and commercial uses and design standards, and so the application is not proposing any industrial or commercial land uses. Particular goal number five states residential uses in North Shushun District should be developed in such a way as to not detract from the scenic nature of the area. This application proposes eight lots at three-plus acres and one, I noted in there, twelve, actually nine and a half. Far greater than the minimum lot size. Taking into account the creek runs right through it. The, the, will be recreational type uses. While there may be residential uses, there'll be some significant restrictions to finding appropriate septic for that. And so there, that was on, on purpose. Goal number six, agricultural areas should be encouraged to continue. There's no established agricultural uses here other than timber production. We don't have a lot of cattle or livestock type development, which is what that was intended for. And goal number seven is all development should be evaluated and complement the rural nature of Shushun County. This do not provide a burden on the infrastructure. And we certainly do that by the density acre. We minimize the access points to where there's only four access points off of the road. And that was through Forest Service's requirements, but also it was to fit our design. So they're shared approaches instead of having nine individual driveways on the road, there'd be four. Large parcel size minimizes the impacts to domestic water sources and maximizes the separation to wastewater development. So you separate these three-acre lots, you have plenty of room to separate septics from well water. The access was certainly a concern. We started the project seeking, you know, advice from Public Works and Forest Service on what they may or may not require. So we did make concerted efforts to make sure we, we met any of their requirements and designed it to meet their requirements. And so we think we did that. We think we met those requirements with their road consent agreement. They'll have a specific agreement for how we maintain that section of Forest Service Road, and we intend to meet that. And on that, I'll stand for questions. I don't have any more to add.
All right, question, any questions at this point for the, for the applicant?
I don't have any at this point.
I don't have any at this point?
I, I need clarification on a couple of items, if I could, please, Mr. Martenson. Describe the, the septic limitations of this property.
More context.
So it looks like these sites are being developed, but, but there is or there isn't room for septic. I'm just confused on whether they can have septic at these sites.
We don't know, and the sites were not tested to determine. We didn't do a site-specific analysis on each one because of the proximity, because it's a long skinny property with the creek running through, through it. The proximity to the surface water is very prohibitive on most of the lots. And so it's unlikely you'll get septic approval because of the type of soils and the proximity of the surface water. So under Idaho Code, Panhandle Health signs off on plats and either lifts or doesn't lift sanitary restrictions. And all properties start with a sanitary restriction in the process of doing the testing and approving a suitable site, then lifts those restrictions. We're not doing that in this time, and nor is it required, and it was on purpose because of the lack of opportunity. If there was greater distance, it would be more marketable as residential lots. And so we would have absolutely done the test hole digs and verified it because that's a better marketing plan for the owner to determine that there are septic sites available. So each site will be on its own. The future owners will, will be required to meet Panhandle's requirements. If they can find a site, they, they may indeed be able to get an approval site there. Again, seven of the lots are probably pretty prohibitive because the creek runs right through the mountain.
But the creek doesn't run through all, all of them?
It does run through all, each of the lots. Some of them, it runs to the back of the lot. So that, that nine acre in the middle, conceivably, you could put it, maybe put a drain field up by the road and be far enough away. That depends on soil types, and you'll, you'll barely get it three hundred feet away. So it really depends on the soil types.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead.
These are going to be intended for recreation?
That's the, that's the.
This Idaho Department of Water Resources just commented that future development may require a stream alteration permit. That's just a may depending on what each owner does?
Yeah, if, if, well, it's anywhere. If, if anybody wants to make any changes or work within the banks of, of any of our creeks and streams, they're, they're, depending on the jurisdiction authority, anywhere below a high watermark, then it probably requires an IDWR and/or a report permit. So any development or proposal to move the creek would require permitting with that. And there is none of that. That was just a, no, which meant that nobody's proposing to move the creek at this time.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Any further questions?
So basically, this, this, this property is, is being sold as recreational. If, and if somebody, it's, it's up to the buyer to go through and figure out if they can have septic or whatever else, and they probably may or may not have it, so.
That's correct. Okay. Any further questions? I'll go forward at this time for the, for the applicant. Okay. And if I read this correctly, there is no public agency or area of impact. Is that correct? Okay. All right, and the commission has already seen and read the written testimony that's been received. So before we go to the next item of testimony by supporters, a few of you folks came in after we started. If you want to speak, I need you to sign that clipboard there if you're wanting to speak, and I'll go ahead and give you another opportunity since you came in after we started.
Do you have to sign it only if you want to speak?
Yeah.
Only if you wanted to speak. Everybody's had that opportunity. Okay, then if you'll hand me that, we will. So what we will do is, and we will limit these to five minutes. We're going to have testimony by supporters of the project, first supporters, and then we will do neutrals, and then we will do those who are opposed to the project. So as I go down the list, the first supporter listed is Mr. Frank Durham, wanted to give comments. So Frank, I'll give you the floor for up to five minutes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Frank Durham. I'm a local real estate agent here. I've lived out here for about twenty-five years. My very first experience in North Idaho was in Bear Creek. And I've got, I've gotten a chance to meet many of you, and it's definitely a special place. And as the real estate industry or the amount of land that we have here is very limited with the terrain that we deal with. We all know that there's a housing shortage, a housing crisis, and there are, these lots are starting out as recreational properties due to the sanitary restriction on there. However, each individual buyer has the opportunity to do a site evaluation to determine if the septic would be allowed, which would then allow them to build a home. And I know many of you have lived in Bear Creek for quite a while, and you all have nice homes there that are likely on properties that have, at one point, been subdivided off of a larger parcel. And had that not happened, then many of those homes would not be on those parcels. So this is, I believe, just an opportunity to provide more places for people to live. We do live in a great area, and unfortunately, we have been discovered by the outside people, and they all want to come to our beautiful part of the country. So just hoping that this is a good opportunity for people to become a part of Bear Creek and enjoy what we all get from them as well.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Durham. All right, I see no more in support, so I will move to the neutrals. Casey McKinnon, did you want to speak or not? You left that undecided.
Well, maybe if there's a possibility at the end of listening to everybody else. If I could make a comment at the end of that period of time?
And this is the only time we'll have a chance for public comment, would be right now.
Okay, well, I just listen.
Okay, all right. So that was our first neutral, and the other neutrals did not mark that they wanted to speak. So that means we will move to those who are opposed to this, going in the order of signup. Gary Drindle?
Right here.
Okay, Gary?
Gary Drindle, I have Clark and Irene Gable that lives up there. That's my mother and father-in-law, so I travel the road probably a couple times a week during the summer and the winter. As everybody knows, that's a twenty mile an hour speed limit on the road with very few places to turn out if you meet another car. I have come very close to having an accident with an oncoming car, probably a dozen times in the six or seven years that I've lived up here, because I'm from Portland, Oregon, and my wife travels the road also. I don't think that the increased traffic that this is going to impose would surely have some vehicle accidents. And especially in the wintertime, when you have hunters that are taking the, the other side, because Clark and Irene live at the, almost at the end of the road. They have twenty acres up there with horses. And when they bring the other daughter, their other daughter brings a horse trailer up there to move horses around, that's a bigger vehicle. And the same time in the wintertime, when you have side-by-sides, there are people are pulling behind a vehicle or a pickup, and some campers that come up there in the wintertime to hunt. All that press puts more pressure on the road. And I just don't feel any extra traffic on the road is going to impose some traffic accidents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Greg Blake, five minutes.
Okay. As far as the thirty-seven acres go, there used to be fifty-seven. We owned that. And at the time, in eighty-two, eighty-three, I had Jerry Todd come out for Panhandle Health, and we walked through that whole thing and found out where we put septic systems at. There was one place, Casey's house is where it's at right now. Right, and the rest of it's too narrow. The canyon, the canyon's too narrow. We're supposed to be two hundred feet from the creek. Hell, and places in there, the creek, the canyon's only two hundred feet wide. Okay, the road, I think somebody else is going to hammer that, but I'm worried about the water. Okay, what's going to happen is you've got nine spots up there. There's going to be three campers on each spot. All right, that's twenty-seven campers up there, or, excuse me, yeah. And then now you've got the, you've got three rigs per camper. They come from out of town. They don't stay up there. They go two towns back and forth, four, five, six times a day. We see it all the time. It's going to look just like across the river from the gas station now. That's what it's going to look like. All right, they're not going to get a septic system. There's a lot of, it's going to be in there. So what they're going to end up doing is they're going to pirate some systems in, which you drive up and down the damn river and see them all over the place. You know, because they're not going to have eighty dollars to have your septic pump out every week. They ain't going to do it. They're going to pirate it. And what that's going to do in term, in the long term, is it's going to put all that gray and black water into the ground. The creek due there is on the, is most time under the ground, and it's only seventy-five feet, maybe a hundred feet deep to bedrock. And then everybody, well, Casey, you're in there, Kenny, you're there. Everybody through there's got punched wells. I mean, driven wells. They're not drilled. So it's all surface water. And when you start contaminating, contaminating that up there, it's going to go right down through there. I think there's only three drilled wells up there, and I have one. Mark Cook's place has one. Jeff Walker's got one that, that they're drilled, and that's in that aquifer. Everybody else is surface water. Drone's, your dad's place there, he gets his water off the hill. You know, and then, you know, Clark Gable's area up there, they're in a different aquifer. And then, so what's going to happen when you, when you contaminate everybody's wells down through there? Is the county going to be liable for that, since they're allowing this to happen? You know, you think about that, the wells. I mean, all right, Casey, you better go have one drilled, so now you're.
Well, I already had another one.
Oh, I'm sorry, Casey, I gotta let him. But it's just like, you know, it, it, he's going to have to drill one. Kenny's going to have to drill one. Drone's going to have to drill one. All them people are going to have to drill one. So you're talking thousands and thousands of dollars per person to have a well put in. And, I mean, and that's, that's, that's going to happen. I mean, just look at, come to Bear Creek now and look at the water. And I did all the clearcutting up there. You know, I don't know how many square miles of clearcuts. But the whole canyon's been clear cut. Bear Creek is tiny. It almost dried up, what, three years ago? That's the first time. I've been in Bear Creek for forty-five years, and I've seen the creek, you know. And now we have all the filament algae. We used to never have that. That's coming down, and because the septic systems that are pirated in now. Frank, there, he's a realtor. Him and his father-in-law, they got all their little campsites through there before you get to the actual homes that are in there. And they're, they're all got something pirated in there, you know. Because they're not going to spend eighty bucks a week to get your septic pumped out for the camper. You know, you see it up the river when you drive up and down there. You'll see a little excavator out there and it's. You'll see a little excavator out there in his lot digging. Now, why's it got an excavator up there? And the next thing you know, then there's camper party there. It's a pirated system there. They're easy to do. People do them. And so that's what's gonna happen there. Now our water's gonna be running. And I don't think the county's gonna come in and try to put in a septic system that's gonna go all the way up and down Bear Creek and run domestic water. I can't see that. There ain't enough population. I think there's thirty-three homes up there now. Used to be three when we first moved up there. And then the road, like you said, I'll let somebody else deal with that one.
I was gonna say, you got about one minute?
Yeah.
Are you all set?
Yeah, I'm good.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right, the next speaker would be Kenneth Carricker.
I'm, yeah, I probably live second closest. Casey would be closest. I'm the next one. And I live, it's, my section is not paved. So, and I can sit out there and count by weekend, sometimes a hundred vehicles go by. You know, as Greg was saying, what they're gonna do, it's gonna be like camping flights, like across the river. And it'll be added traffic. There's enough, and where I, my section of the road is quite narrow to begin with. You need a log truck or another vehicle, one of you has to stop and back up or find a wider spot. You know, I have the septic process well. You know, and I've lived there thirty-five years, and I've watched the creek dry up. You know, when I first moved there, it was dry three months out of the year. Now it's, it runs two to three months out of the year. You know, and that's, that's due to a lot. You know, they logged that bottom strip where those parcels are going in. You know how many moved ago?
Twelve to two.
Yeah, and the creek just dried up right after they did that. You know, I lost the water. I didn't lose my well. Casey lost his due to the change of the water. And that, that was my main concern. I used to catch fish when it would run through my property. I haven't seen a fish in there in ten years. You know, and, you know, it's, yeah, put another nine parcels up there. You know, even if there's just one per parcel, but like Greg said, I don't believe that's what'll happen. Because people, you see, they, they kind of group up, you know, eight, ten people come in and they travel back and forth on the road. You know, because we've got a couple of weekend warriors that are down the road from us when their kids ride back and forth on the dirt section. So we get their dust all, all, all weekend long. Right now, they're hauling logs, and they're, they're quite dusty also. You know, but that, that's, like, yeah, they gotta make a living too. But, you know, it's, you know, they come up and travel around right there and back and forth. You know, instead of, there's miles of Forest Service roads up the top if they wanna stay truss. You know, because they're just little kids, you know, I, you know, see, you know, when I was a kid, I wanted to have fun too. You know, and how many different places in the thirty-five years have gone in there? It's, there's quite a few. The parcel I got used to be Greg's. That's, that's about all I got. You know, I'm worried about the water is my main concern, my well and traffic.
Appreciate your comments. Thank you. All right, next asked to speak would be John Heiser.
Yeah, I'm John Heiser. I live at Bear Creek also. I'm up on the hill on Reynolds Side. But like Casey was, or Kenny was saying, you get the weekend warriors or the campers, if there's lots down below us, I've had to chase them off my road, and there's nine and four service access. But my main concern is the traffic going up there. My well's on a different aquifer. But the traffic, I've been in a car wreck up there. I've had a collision with a dump truck, or with a garbage truck. There's just no room on that road. Then you start adding an extra hundred cars a weekend, and how many times to the gas station every day. The only people who go twenty miles an hour on our road are the people that live there. You get downtowners, they're going forty-five, fifty. The roads aren't made for that. It's not wide enough. I mean, you get places where people, both cars stop because they just gotta jockey around. And so that's my main concern.
Thank you for sharing. Appreciate it, John. Okay, next up would be Rick Foley.
I'm Rick Foley. I live at Bear Creek. I live close to the edges of Bear Creek, not as far down as the rest of people. I've been there for twenty-four years. Like Greg said, the growth there in that little Bear Creek area has been exponential here, just pretty much in the last ten years. It's really about crazy. And our biggest concern is the traffic. I mean, we're at the beginning. We don't see all the traffic that they do down the foreign. But just our section of road, Frank and I last night, we went out and measured to the whole length of Bear Creek. And there, there's a good, there's six sections of that road that are well below twenty. I don't know what the standard is. Majority of the road's twenty feet wide. We found that. And there are sections there down farther, like by Kenny's one that are anywhere from fifteen to sixteen feet maximum. And like I said, the big thing is the traffic. I, just the other day, I read there are two logging trucks up above, and they're not doing twenty miles an hour. And they're not stopping anytime quick, and you're, you're, you're just moving over. And especially up at the beginning where the rock pit is, there's no guard rail there. That's just a sheer rock down to, you know, the marsh down there. There have been cars that have gone over that, in the wintertime especially. The biggest thing is, like John was saying, is the traffic. These people that are out of town, out of state, they just, no regard for, you know, my locals. We all know the spots where they're skinned. We all take into account that. We see somebody coming, we'll stop, pull over. These people don't, they're just flying through. So you could be in Skidmore Park, they're flying through, and there's nowhere to go. It's, it's, it's very, very aggravating, to say the least. People from out of town that have no regard for us locals there. And so that's the biggest thing, is the traffic and the road not supporting it. Especially with a log truck traffic going with that. That's a big point. And so that.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments. Okay, I need help here. I read half of that.
Frank Coolman?
Cool.
Cool and no?
No.
Cool and no, okay. Look like a D F M, okay.
Uh, Frank Coolman, up Bear Creek, up off of Bear Ridge Lane. I'm actually Rick's neighbor. My family and I have been up there five years. I'm a former retired fire service, thirty-one years. And like Rick had mentioned, yesterday, we took some time out. We went from the beginning of Bear Creek all the way to where the pavement ended, and we measured the width of the road. Now, coming from the fire service, I've been on a lot of campaign fires up and down the state of California, state of Oregon. And fighting traffic of civilians trying to evacuate an area during a fire has been quite challenging over the years due to road widths, paved road widths. Now, fire apparatus and, you know, large equipment, you're looking at up to ninety-six inch of width for a good-sized piece of equipment. Parts of this road that Rick mentioned, a, a, a fire apparatus coming head-on with, say, some civilian vehicles trying to exit the area or evacuate, they're not gonna be able to pass. And the equipment's not gonna have room to move over, because a lot of parts, a lot of parts of this road have no shoulder. It's basically, you're gonna go off into a ditch or near the quarry, you're off a cliff. So my concern is, is the road width, the, the possibility of, you know, having some type of emergency there in the valley, which will require residents to evacuate. And which is gonna make things difficult, because it's one way in and one way out paved. So, and due to the topography of the area, because we do live in a valley. And fire loves to travel uphill quite quickly, especially if it's driven by wind. And we get a lot of wind through Bear Creek coming from east to west. So everybody at the far end of Bear Creek, if we did have an incident, they're gonna be, you know, hot-tailing it out of there. And there's gonna be, there's, there's four choke points. And those choke points is going to endanger some lives when they're trying to exit the valley. Not only, let alone the day-to-day traffic that occurs in there along with the logging trucks that are coming in and out during the logging operations back there in the valley. So those, those were my concerns.
Thanks, appreciate it. Okay, next on the list was Barbara Blake.
Yeah, I think I'm the longest continual member of Bear Creek. I've been up there for, before Gables, before, I actually owned Kenny's place and Casey's place and Greg's place before they all appeared. And so I've seen a lot on that road. More than Gary sees, a couple of interactions with other cars every now and then. I'm several times a month, I almost have a head on. It's not unusual at all. You know, I'm in and out of Bear Creek. That's just how it is. My concern really is the road. It's, it's a difficult thing. I noticed there's a couple more twenty mile an hour signs up there. I think that might help. But it could be more. They could probably be posted all along the road. But the road is a big concern. But my major concern is the creek. Since all of the development that has happened up there, when I moved up there, there were two or three families, and that was it. So, you know, the road was, the creek was pretty pristine. And up at the other end, it was really pristine. But down where I'm at right now, when I moved there in eighty-five, because I live just a mile or so in Bear Creek now. But the creek was very nice. Now it's frequently turbid. Now, and that never happened before. But it's not just the logging, it's all over the rest of the stuff. It's a little bit uncontrolled. So we just need to watch our creeks, our waterways. It's a difficult thing, but added pressure on that is not gonna be, not gonna be pretty.
Okay.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you for sharing. All right, by my count, I have everybody, given everybody an opportunity to said yes on this chart. So at this time, rebuttal by the advocate. You have anything you'd like to?
Sure. So certainly, I take everybody's concerns in, into account. I'm pretty, I'm pretty familiar with this area, having been the planner on the asphalt batch plant scenario. And so I have been the planner for this community and issued building permits and lots of development up in that area. So I am very familiar with, with all of the aspects of it. And so we purposely came in knowing the traffic was gonna be the largest of concerns along with environmental. And so with the traffic, it became one of those, well, what do you do about it? What is the mitigation? When you're causing an impact with your development, what is the mitigation for it? And so natural thought would be widen the road, straighten it out, make it more, make it more traversable for more traffic. Well, that would be, and the agencies agreed that that would be the exact opposite. If we straightened the road and widened it, which they didn't have the room for it to do much more, it would only make the traffic go faster versus slower. The fact that it is an arterial road to a Forest Service public access makes it applicable for more development. And so it is gonna have to be managed the best possible with speed. Because it's already a twenty mile an hour road, adding speed bumps wasn't really something the agencies wanted to maintain. And so they didn't require it. So we went to the two agencies hat in hand, saying, what are you gonna need to mitigate the, the impact? And then these were the standards they came back with for us. And so we feel like we've met that. Certainly, there's compliant issues with speed, and people need to be aware. So certainly increased signage, increased law enforcement, all of the above can certainly help with those things. But that was, that was intended. We didn't just not pay attention to that. We very much went in thinking, what are we gonna have to do about the road? Environmentally, everybody has the right to water. Everybody has a right to appropriate septic. We have numerous agencies, good, bad, or ugly. We have numerous agencies that regulate those things. And in the development world, we depend on those agencies to do their job and make sure that applications are meeting the specifications. We do have currently requirements for distances from septic, from surface water for septic systems. There's push nationally, and particularly in this state, to reduce those numbers. And so there's, there's meaningful regulation change in the, in the coming future that keeps with the hundred feet we require now. But, but leads us to believe that a hundred feet separation between septics and wells is adequate scientifically. Anytime there's non-compliant situations with non-compliant septic systems or non-compliant wells, that's a requirement of folks to bring that to the attention of the agency so, so that action can be taken on the non-compliance. I deal with it all the time as the planner. If I don't know about it and I don't have evidence, I can't consider somebody non-compliant or consider somebody guilty of a code violation. So, and it is dependent on our agencies to regulate non-compliant situations. Certainly, if somebody's water's being affected, then you have a civil right to that remedy to identify what is causing the effect. Is it the fact that you've got a shallow well and surface water? Or is it the fact that somebody's got a septic system too close? That has to be investigated through those agencies and then handled separately. Everybody has the right. And that was also, we specifically designed the lots to be three acres in size, so that would be plenty of room to find an adequate site if there was one. Also recognize that the creek does run through the middle of this, and it is going to be prohibited. And so it was bought and is intended to be sold as likely a lower market value of recreational rather than full residential.
Anything further?
I've got all I got. Oh, I'll add one more. As also the emergency manager for the county, two-way in and out, and emergency access is keenly on my mind and our EMS folks and fire folks. We don't have any specific design requirements in our development code for addressing those things, but certainly that is being discussed and that is being a real particular hot button for, we don't have to watch the news very often before you've seen an incident where we had a large-scale fire, an incident flood, and people couldn't get out. So that, that is very much recognized. And so there's, what to do about that is, is limit the numbers. Instead of going with a whole bunch of lots, we went with nine lots. But also to look at road improvements for, for that. So that is something of concern, and we took that into account as well.
Okay. Any questions of the, from either of you? All right, at this time, I would motion that we close the public hearing and begin deliberation. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Commissioner Dose?
Yes.
Commissioner Zimmern?
Here.
Commissioner Cassidy?
Here.
All right, and so at this point, we will take no further evidence, testimony. It's open to commissioners and their thoughts or concerns. I'll start. I have a concern that I'm going to want a little more time to think about this and probably seek some help from the prosecuting attorney's office personally. And so that's one of my thoughts. I'm thinking I might want to table the decision for a week or so while I think about this.
There's some things going through my head I would like to check on as well for the current residents, that I'd like to look into options. And take all their concerns in.
So we, you wanna do a motion or?
I entertain a motion to table the meeting. We're done with the hearing, but to table the meeting for a week or two weeks, so we have time to make the decision.
I'll second it.
I'll, I'll motion to table the decision for more investigation on our parts. I'll, I'll motion to table the decision for more investigation on our parts.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so what we've decided to do is give ourselves a week or so, what did we, what was your motion? One, one week or two?
I didn't put in a timeframe, but we need to do two.
We need a date.
About two, I'll motion for two weeks.
Motion, let's redo that, or motion for two weeks.
Okay, I'll motion for, okay, motion for two weeks.
She, she said, will you second that?
I'll second it.
Okay, revote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we'll reconsider, or the final consideration, or continue to consider this in two weeks after we've had a chance to think through it and ask some questions. All right, that is...
So is that gonna be July eleventh?
Or if you're gonna get actual details?
What do you guys wanna do on the tenth? I just didn't know.
The eleventh is a Thursday. I'm okay with the eleventh for you.
Eleven's fine with me.
I don't think it works, yeah.
That work for you?
So time, we can specify, if I could put my planner hat on?
It was nine o'clock, all right? Nine o'clock?
Yep.
Nine o'clock on Thursday, the eleventh? Okay, got that headed?
Yes.
Okay, so nine o'clock on Thursday, the eleventh, to continue the meeting. Okay, I'll put up my phone before I forget.
So that is the official notice to all the folks, if that's the time and the place, there will be no further notification. I was gonna be on your agenda for that.
Okay, so with that, we are adjourned.